...United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Browley is in Harvard University taking a course, so we'll go ahead with the roll call.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Heinz?
Here.
Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Marasek?
Here.
Trustee Bond?
Here.
The next on the agenda is the members of the public are invited to come speak at this time. If you would sign the list over there if you haven't already, and if you would try to limit your comments to two minutes, although we don't time anybody, and if you could try to cut down repeating certain things.
If you're here for the public hearing, that'll be the next item. This is just if you have comments in general, anything to do with the village, but if you're here from Belmaray, that'll be the next item.
After the consent agenda, so. All right, next is public comments. Any public comments except on the Belmaray deal? Next is the public hearing and the amendment to the NH6 agreement for Belmaray.
Sure, and I can explain the process there. The public hearing is open to any member of the public who wants to speak on the issue of the amendment to the annexation agreement for the Belmaray subdivision. To be specific about what's being amended, it's one section only, and it regards the fencing requirement in the villa or townhome areas. The village had been contacted, it's probably more than a year ago now, by one individual landowner seeking to have a fence in that area, and it was then through the developer suggested that that offer for the ability to have a fence in a particular yard in either the villa or the townhome area be extended to everyone. And so that offer was made to everyone. Anyone who took it up is listed on the annexation agreement as having the ability to put in a fence, not a requirement, but the ability to. And anyone who didn't take the offer, of course, is not listed because we cannot change the contractual agreements of a person who doesn't wish to have that changed. So the list will be as long as the number of people who were interested in participating, and that is what tonight's public hearing is about. That's all it does. It doesn't change anything else about the subdivision or the nature or conditions of living there, but it does change that one thing, and again, only for the lots that actually wish it to be changed. So with that, anyone wanting to come and speak in that regard is more than welcome to do so.
I have a question.
Before the public, or?
Well, I just, I want to clarify. So the addresses listed wish to have that amended for the property.
That's my understanding, yes.
So if the property owner didn't wish to, and the property is transferred to somebody else, they buy it, in the future, will that person be allowed to come back and ask for it?
I'll give you a two-part answer to that.
Thank you.
Technically, no, because they're not listed. However, presumptively, since the board is seeing fit, I assume, to pass this tonight, if they, if that person later wants to come, the form's ready, the annexation will be amended for that lot, and it would just be one public hearing away.
But just because the previous owner didn't want?
Didn't consent to it.
Okay.
I have questions concerning that as well, but we'll do that after the public meeting, or the public hearing.
Sure.
Anybody would like to speak, come down? Sure.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jason Hoke. My wife has Missy Hoke over there. We've actually lived in Belmaria for almost three years, pretty much since two years ago. We've been working adamantly on getting the approval for fences. We found people to contact, got through names. It's been quite a long process here. I think it's one of the only subdivisions in Montgomery that aren't allowed fences. A few months ago, which is why everybody's here, my wife and I actually went to every single door affected in that 1 through 100 lot. And going on the questions that you had, we had the form drafted up by the lawyer explaining what was going on, the change that was happening, and we told everybody that we talked to about this, and if they wanted to come. We told them as well, if you weren't put in the annexation at this time, there's more than likely a process you can do to get on there. And we also pushed to say if you're planning on selling in the future, this is a selling point because the house will already be put in that annexation, but you'll be allowed to do that. Pretty much, I mean, a lot of people are here today that want it. I understand that some of the lots are shaped a little bit differently, but that's going to be up to the homeowners association on the design of the fence. I think it's overwhelming with the amount of people here that feel that the fences should be allowed, and it's going to be good for the neighborhood. We got some bike paths. I mean, it's a, it's a good community, and I think the fences, I probably, almost all the homeowners here, most of them have dogs. I think all of us would love a fence so we can just let our dogs out and run around, give a little bit more privacy. So, yeah. I don't think I've got anything else. Yeah.
As far as anybody that hasn't signed, that they wanted one, though, this board, when you said they probably can come be added to it, this board changes, so the guy may came 10 years from now, and it may not be the same, but...
Right, and that's why I gave them the paperwork that had the attorney's information, so, and I told them if they had any questions, feel free to contact them and get the information for if you wanted it, want it in the future. And I know the one lot that was approved through here, but not through the HOA at the time, I would imagine if, say, 10 years from now, if they wanted that same thing, then they would just have to do that, that same, that same process to get that approval.
She was in an unusual situation because she was, nothing was behind her.
Right.
She was at the end.
Right.
And I think that's why we went ahead and decided. Thank you.
Hi. Okay, I do not like talking in front of anyone, but I'm just here to support our neighborhood. We do back up to a bike path. I love our lot. We moved there because of that lot, knowing we weren't able to have a fence, but I don't necessarily agree. I know many people in fact, smaller across 30, their lots are the same size, if not smaller, than a lot of ours, and they can have them, so I would just like our neighborhood to be considered the first 100 lots. You brought up dogs. We have a dog, and we had an electric fence place come out to kind of quote us, and we can't have one because we don't have enough space in between our neighbors. Like, you have to have, look it up, you have to have 300 feet or 20 feet on either side of the actual electric area, so now we can't even have that. And, yeah, we could ask our neighbor, hey, can we use their yard, but we're good friends with our neighbor. You know, I don't, they're not going to let me, you know, dig in their yard. So I think that's another issue, if we can't even have an electric fence for dogs, that it'd be great to be considered for an actual fence, for safety and kids. Yes, thank you. Jill Larson.
Okay, I'm not going to repeat anything. I'm in agreement with everybody that just came in and spoke, and just to kind of add to that, we do live along the bike path on Foster Drive, and sometimes there's a lot of speeding cars that come through there, so to have the fence, I think, will just add a little bit more safety for those of us who have kids or have pets. And in addition, you know, like Jason mentioned, we've been trying to, my husband and I have been there about a year and a half, didn't know, we couldn't have a fence before we moved in. That was a deal breaker, unfortunately. Our realtor didn't know that, but I feel like we keep getting told, okay, we're thinking about it, we're working on it, so, you know, now the other, the next summer is here, and we're just wondering how much longer are we going to potentially have to wait? Is it going to go into now, next summer again, or the summer after that? So I know we're all very eager to put the fence in, so I'm hoping that we're able to do it, and we're able to do it very soon. I know that we have to pull a permit, and that's a process also, but I just hope that we're able to put the fence in, and we're all able to put the fence in. So, that's it. Thanks. Oh, it's right here, yeah. Alicia?
Let me say that I was on the board when Belmaray came in out of Texas. They were one of the best people that we had as far as back in the village. Foster, which you mentioned this street, is my uncle, who was the village clerk for 30-some years here. So, but at that time, the lots were so small that the builder really felt that it'd be more wide-open spaces instead of, I don't think he had a little kid or a dog, and we didn't think about that, but thank you for your comments. Anybody else before your lawyer speaks?
I was just going to add...
Go ahead.
...30, West Jefferson, Aprilville, Illinois. I'm here on behalf of the declarant, who is the assessor declarant to the association, and we support the homeowners and their efforts to get a fence and accommodate the requests. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions I can, if you have any.
Yeah, Belmaray has changed hands, and that was part of it, too, so.
Oh, no, right.
But they're still very good people.
Good.
We know all them, too.
I was trying to follow right after that.
Yes, we know all them, too. Any other questions? Anybody else comment? Okay.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing at this point. The board will take up the item that will actually pass the amendment under items for separate action, so that'll hopefully be in just a few moments.
I have some questions, if I may. My questions are related to, is, first off, is there anyone here who's against the fences? Okay, just my opinion, the fences are fine, but I want to talk about the process and the process that they've had to go through, and we have an annexation agreement with the builder that doesn't allow fences. I don't see why they have to go through this whole process. Yes, you have to go through the process to change the annexation agreement, but now, however many homes are in the subdivision, we now have, say there's 150, we now have 150 different technical, technically, 150 different annexation agreements. My first question is, why can't we give a blanket annexation agreement that will cover every home there? Because if, if there's someone who hasn't put their home on this, of all of these homeowners that we have here, and they sell their lot later, and I move in, and I, the two neighbors, my neighbor to each side, both put their houses on this annexation agreement, and they, I see they have a fence, I'm going to say, okay, I, we can do fences. And then I'm going to realize, okay, now, wait a minute, I got to come in, I got to get my permit. The village should say, no, you're not part of the annexation agreement, which as a resident is just going to play with my mind, because why do my neighbors have it if I don't? I guess that's my first question.
Do you want me to go for that, or do you want to keep going?
Yeah, you can, well, you can go for that now, and I'll ask my second question here in a second.
All right. The reason that it works like this, and honestly, usually it's kind of the flip side, which I'll explain in a moment where we have trouble, but the reason it has to work like this is when the property was originally developed, the property was under single ownership, the owner slash developer. So there was one agreement for all, however many lots, 150, I think you said. However many lots there were, it was easy because there's one agreement, one owner of all the property. It's a binding contract. An annexation agreement is not your normal tool that a village uses. It's exceptional in that it is a binding contract with the individual landowners. Now, when those lots began to be sold off, the owner changed. So now you don't have one owner, like we did in the beginning, now we end up with 150 owners in our example at the end, once they're all sold. The agreement has both benefits and burdens on both parties, rights and responsibilities. I can't, or rather, you can't, and I can't write it for you, I cannot change the rights or the responsibilities of one of those landowners without their consent, because it's a contractually binding agreement, so we have to get their consent. Now, I was going to say, there's a flip side that is usually the problem. Usually, the problem is that you have an annexation agreement, you don't build into it the provision for individual lot amendments, like we did here, and then somebody comes up with a unique circumstance and says, I want to change this, and we say, well, we want to help you, but we're going to need to get the consent of everybody else to do it, which is far worse. And so what we did is, we evolved through this development process through the years in Montgomery, we realized by building in this lot-by-lot amendment process, which we're using here tonight, we actually increased the flexibility and the ability for landowners where they run into a problem, to be able to deal with that. So that's usually the problem that we face. In this case, we don't have that problem, and it just happens that we're doing it for a whole lot of people. I would hope also that we could do everybody, but everybody didn't want it. But they at least were informed and had that choice, and again, I really do think that in the future, if one or all of them come forward, with the comment that trustee Lee made notwithstanding, I think for the most part, they're going to get it, and it's a relatively simple process, now that we've already gone through this process of developing the form.
It just seems to me like it's relatively, it's very inefficient to keep, say there's 75 houses that aren't on here, that if they come individually, that's staff time, that's board time, that's attorney time, that it seems very inefficient to me. Now, my next question is, okay, they want fences. Say, for instance, I live in Belmaray, I want a shed. Say they don't allow sheds, or, and I'm just using this as an example, and they, everyone's against sheds, but I have an, I have a separate and distinct annexation agreement with the village, and I don't know if you have an HOA or not, but say the HOA is saying that they don't allow sheds, but I have a separate annexation agreement with the village. What keeps me from trying to amend my annexation agreement with the village, and at that point, what's the point of an HOA?
Okay, there's a couple of questions built in there together, and I'm going to take them in reverse order for clarity. The HOA question. If you have a annexation agreement and you have HOA covenants, which are two totally separate, independent things.
Correct.
And let's say both of them prohibit sheds, all right, at one moment in time, when you buy your house. HOA says you can't have a shed, annexation agreement says you can't have a shed, and you are able, through whatever means, to convince the village that sheds are now allowed, okay? So this one flipped up, but this one's still down. You still can't build a shed because the HOA covenants still govern you as well. You'd have to have both of them convinced to flip up to be able to build a shed. So your question on what's the point of having an HOA? The answer is, it gives you, as a majority rule, you know, you, the homeowners, independent of the village, has nothing to do with the village, still have that control. So it very much matters to have an HOA for those sorts of covenants. As to the, kind of the first part of the question, let's presume, again, that the annexation agreement prohibits sheds, and you want to convince for your lot only to do that. You could, just like these folks have done here, or like the first person who came had convinced the board to make that change. They could, and that's built into the agreement, that concept. But again, you'd have to be persuasive about why. There'd be a public hearing. If the people came and said, we really hate this idea because we bought with the intention that there not be sheds in this subdivision, and we're really upset that you would grant it to this one person, hopefully the political process and the democratic process would convince this board of the appropriate decision on that.
Those were my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think there's enough people here to show us that you guys do want that, and that your homeowners association is active, so.
If this was one person here, I think it'd be a different issue. You know, if one person said they wanted a fence, and there were, but obviously, there's numerous people here that want a fence, and I, who am I to say? It's not my subdivision. And if you guys want a fence, that's fine with me.
Brooke was the Lone Ranger when she came in here.
I have a couple of questions related to the plan commission. Has this been deliberated by the plan commission?
I don't, I don't believe so, trustee Bond. The annexation agreement amendment process is not the plan commission's. They review other things regarding land entitlement, but not the annexation agreement specifically. So I don't think so.
One concern I have, which is why I was hoping that it had been aired out in another venue, while there's 25 or 30 people here, there may be 100 who think this is a horrible idea, and we don't have feedback from them on which to base a decision.
Well, the good news there is that this is the subject of a public hearing, so there most certainly was notice given, just like there would be notice given to the plan commission for the same thing. So that opportunity is here tonight, just as it would have been in the plan commission.
And we had no one opposed to say, go ahead.
Good. Between the property owner of the vacant lots and the homeowners that are out there now, there were 92 lots that were represented in favor of the change for the, to allow fences. That leaves, by my calculation, 56 that did either not respond or had no interest in the fences themselves, so.
And some of those...
It's almost two-thirds.
Some of those are vacant?
Yes. Yes.
Is there any reason in our packet, under Exhibit A, why lot numbers 1 through 94 are bolded and the others aren't? Is that signifying a difference of anything?
I don't believe that there's any significance.
Thank you.
Vacant, okay, vacant versus occupied lots?
1 through 94.
Exhibit B.
On Exhibit A, well, and I believe in Exhibit B as well.
Exhibit A is a whole subdivision. Exhibit B are just the slab owners that are created to a...
But specifically to Exhibit A?
Okay.
I don't, because there's, there are lots that are bolded and not bolded that are out there, so...
Okay, that's, I wasn't sure if that signified something, so, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll, okay, go ahead. Come down here, please, we can all hear. We'll let you go first with the little one. That's all right, he can stand behind there.
Hey, I just want to make sure, for all of the village, like, all the fences have to be uniform, like, there's a code, and same height, no chain link, like, is that correct? If it does get approved, they'd all be within the same guidelines of each other, that we'd look halfway decent, right?
Out in the, out in the western areas of town, all the areas that have been developed, say, since 2001 or 2, yes. The older parts of town aren't subject to annexation agreements, so they're only governed by the village code, which is a little bit more flexible, but again, I don't think in anywhere that chain link is allowed, for example.
Okay.
There is a specific exhibit that's a part of the annexation agreement amendment that lays out exactly the type of fence, which is the same, that's out there now for the other subdivisions.
And that's going in our...
Yes.
...thing tonight? Okay, thanks.
You can go to Brooke's house and look at hers.
That's Exhibit J, correct? Thank you.
Oh, they never approved yours. I'm sorry, that's why you're here tonight, all right.
Good evening. I have just one question. We're, we're Lot 99, like in Belmaria, but you mentioned Lot 1 through 94. If, if this annexation is changed, will we be included, like, in the, because our CCNR is the way it reads right now, like, it's Lot 1 through 100.
The point that he was in our packet here, lots 1 through 94 are in bold type. Lot 100 is listed as well. It just happened to be in bold type, so he was questioning why it was in bold type. All right, thank you.
I guess I have another question. In Exhibit J, as I was reading through this, it, number six, it says, "When screening a patio deck, fence shall not exceed a height of six feet above grade." Letter B, it says, "Fence shall not extend more than 15 feet from house wall or into easement areas." Now, on each, on the side of each home, there's an easement, correct? There's a utility easement? Usually five feet? Does that mean that they have to be five feet within their property line?
This is for the patio or deck.
But this is...
Patio or deck.
I got you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, go ahead.
Go on down.
I'm seeing four feet above grade. Did you see six?
For the fence, six feet is... Go down to number six, letter B. Number six.
Hi, board. My name is Artesh Franklin, and my wife, Valerie, and I just moved here, and my question is, is how can we, we came in a little late with the fencing issue, but we know we're aware of it. So how can we get on the list to make sure we're included?
So your, your house is presently not on the list?
I'm not sure.
But you'd, you'd like to be?
Lot 40.
Okay.
You'd like to be.
I have to say, this is for Lot 20, we're going to be here tonight, and we're going to go at the back, and we're going to, I'm going to write it, and then we're going to leave it to the, kind of, future lot owners to come again, and stay retired, and we'll first come.
So are you saying you want his included with tonight's approval?
You're on, thank you. You're on the list.
Perfect. Already on the list.
Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public hearing on the amendment to the annexation agreement for Belmaray. Next is Mary. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Mary Meliker, and I live at 2652 Pecos. I was probably the fourth person that moved in in 2006. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you how I'm feeling about this. At the time, when I bought my house, I was given the option of building a patio with the builder, of putting on a patio, and the builder, it would have been a slab, and that's not what my vision was, so I declined it. After saving for eight years for what I really wanted, I recently contracted with Yorkville Landscaping, and much to my dismay, was denied a permit. I was told I can have two feet because of the easement. Now, I bought a house on the pond for the backyard. Love the pond, love the whole nature, and this is what I'm allowed for a patio. I pay $6,500 taxes, which is more or comparable to everybody else in the area, and my yard is extremely sloped and very hard to maintain. Excuse me. I am the highest point in the subdivision, and I don't know if, sure. It's very inexpensive undertaking to put this in because of the slope and to have the retaining wall. I do not feel my home should have been permitted to be built on that lot if this was the code, because two feet, that's not even a grill. And for eight years, I've been cooking on my driveway and putting the grill back in the garage to make the neighborhood look nice. I feel like I am being denied the right to enhance my property, and it would be an enhancement, because right now, it's just a backyard that's like this. I sit on two steps when I'm in my backyard while everybody else is out on their deck or everything else. I'm just respectfully requesting a variance to allow this construction, and I was told this would be the first step. And I also have a picture of the construction. I don't know if you'd want to see that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this related to a permeability percentage issue? Do you know, Rich?
Well, that's part of the reason for maximum lot coverage, yes, and Steve can, I'm sorry, Pete can address it more succinctly than I can, but that is one consideration that goes along with lot coverage. One of the things that I intend to bring to the board at a later date is a whole discussion about lot coverage in different zoning districts. Unfortunately, within our code today, every one of the five different categories for single-family homes, detached homes, has the same calculation for lot coverage in the zoning ordinance, and I'm talking about lots that vary from 18,500 square feet on down to 7200 square feet or even smaller. They're all required to have no more than 35% lot coverage. So it's a bigger issue than just in Belmaray. But to answer your question, it is partially about permeability and also green space and aesthetics.
Ma'am, were you, as far as patio, you're not going with the slab, are you going with pavers?
Pavers, which are removable.
See, in my, I happen to work for a landscape construction company, so in my opinion, pavers are permeable. It's not like a concrete slab where the water's going to run off. Yeah, there is a little runoff on a paver patio, but as far as I'm concerned, a patio or a deck, a paver patio or a deck is, should be considered permeable.
Steve is our landscaping expert. We will take all this in advisement, you have to go through the process, as you know. Thank you for the drawings, though, and we'll get, our staff will get back to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just one question, maybe for staff, just to anticipate, is, do you need any direction? Otherwise, I think the logical process would be to put her through the variance process with the zoning board of appeals.
That would be the next appropriate step, to go through the variance process. If there are comments that the board would like to share with us, it, it helps us because we don't want anybody to waste their time going through a variance and then realize that they've gone through the expense and the time, and there really wasn't a chance of, of it being granted. So if you have other comments, I'd appreciate it.
I would be willing to grant the variance.
We'll, we'll get in touch with you after the meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Individually. Okay, next is the consent agenda, which I will read and take a motion. Go ahead, Pete.
There's one thing I want to bring up on it. I want to see him bring that wages money back. He's going to vote on this other part, but about the wages, I want that brought back.
Which one?
Consent agenda for the wages.
Item G. Item G.
This doesn't, this doesn't have to do with wages for village staff employees. It's really just, it's a housekeeping item, whatever.
But let's do this, you want to talk about that one, so let's take that one off the consent agenda and approve the rest of the consent agenda, right?
That's fine.
Okay. So removing item G from the consent agenda.
It'll become item E on separate action.
Minutes of the, item consent A, minutes of the special board meeting of May twenty-second to fourteen. B, counts payable through May sixth, two thousand fourteen, the amount of seventy-one thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. C, building report for May two fourteen. D, accounts receivable report for April two fourteen. E, cancellation of the June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen Committee of the Whole Meeting. F, appointment by the village president of Gretchen Countryman, one eight eight Maple Ridge Lane, to the historic preservation for a term from June first to fourteen through May thirty-first to seventeen. And G, ordinance sixteen twenty-five, amending the number of Class One liquor license, waiver of first passage on second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take the roll call, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Items for sec, separate action. Ordinance sixteen twenty-six, authorizing the execution of a partial amendment to annexation agreement for the Belmaray property regarding fences, waiver of first passage on second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yeet.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
All of you understand that? We're going to keep reading on our separate, but anytime you guys want to, leave with the little ones, we're, you're welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Just getting to the good stuff, trustee.
Yeah. Item B, waiver of bid and award of contract to purchase one stainless steel V-Box spreader with snowplow and pre-wetting system in the amount of fifty-eight thousand one oh three from Benell Industries of Dixon, Illinois. Michael?
Thank you, trustee. Actually, the next three items all have to do with vehicle purchases. Alan Duncan, our fleet mechanic, is in the audience today, so if you like, where did Alan go? There he is, he moved on us. Alan is here, so if you have any questions of him, he'd be more than happy to answer. This item is a waiver of bid and purchase of a stainless steel V-Box spreader. As you may recall, several meetings ago, the board approved the purchase of the cabin chassis portion of this truck. The last several trucks we've purchased, we've been attaching just a salt spreader right to the frame of the truck, rather than purchasing a dump body and inserting a salt spreader. They just work much better for our needs, maintenance is easier, especially with the corrosive nature of salt. We're asking for a waiver of bid tonight to award a contract to Benell. Benell has built our last several units, has provided fine quality product, we feel at a fair price to the village. So approval tonight would be to complete this truck. We put the order in with Benell, they start working on it, we believe we'll have it for the upcoming winter season.
I make the motion to approve that.
I just have one quick question. This was in the budget, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bond, any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Heinz?
Yeet.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz? Sorry. Trustee Lee?
Yes. All right. C, waiver of bid and award of contract for twenty-seven thousand one hundred and one to Kaufman Truck Sales of Montgomery for the purchase of one two thousand fifteen GMC twenty-five hundred HD pickup truck. Michael, again?
Thank you. This was also a budgeted item, this replaces the current fleet vehicle, which has well over a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, so with this truck, there's no specific state bid for this particular vehicle. So we took a little different approach. We first asked for a quote from the vendor that handles many of the state bids that we've used in the past. Again, this truck isn't on a state bid, but we thought that would be a good reference point. They gave us a quote, it had about a seven thousand dollar discount off the typical price. Knowing that we have a vendor in town who also carries this make and model and could supply it, we asked them to independently give us a quote. We didn't share with them any of the pricing information that we had received, we did share with them the specifications and told them that we needed an identical truck, we didn't change or waive anything just so we could get it to the local vendor. They really came through for us and actually provided almost an eleven thousand dollar discount off the manufacturer suggested, what all of us would pay. Now, we would typically, municipalities will get a discount, but we felt that was pretty significant. So our recommended, recommendation tonight is to waive the standard bid process and award the contract to Kaufman Truck for the purchase of this vehicle. The award to Kaufman would be twenty-seven thousand one hundred and one dollars. I'm also asking for approval tonight for an additional eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for a total vehicle cost of forty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars to completely outfit this truck. That does come in under budget, again, we budgeted that. The additional equipment is shown on the last page of your packet. There's about eight pages of specifications in here on the truck, if you're interested. So I'd be happy to answer.
Alan, come on down there, we've seen you showed up, we're going to make you talk. Go ahead. Any questions, Doug?
Yes. You said that the bid that came in from the state vendor was about four thousand dollar savings? And then these-
About seven thousand.
About seven thousand? And this was eleven, so about four thousand under that? Okay, thank you.
Are we, we're selling the old truck, correct?
Yes, yes, we are.
Not trading it in, you're selling it. How much more excess stuff do we have like that laying around?
Not much compared to what we traded in last year to Benell to further discount the price of last year's plow truck we purchased. So there's not much unused equipment laying around. Alan's been very active over the last two years in, in getting some cash for a lot of the, the obsolete and outdated equipment we've had, he's been very successful at that. So generally now, we try to have some trade-in portion of our purchase, whether that's the old vehicle, et cetera, and you've seen it on some other ones, so he's done a great job on that. It's a good question, thank you.
Thank you.
For giving me that lead in.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion to-
So moved. Comment, if I may, I'm very, very happy to see this purchase being made locally, so it's a good outcome for everybody.
Yeah, thank you to Public Works for seeking out the local vendor.
I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Steve? All in favor? Or, I'm sorry. I'm at a different meeting. Go ahead, roll call.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yeet.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
His way would have been faster.
I know it. Waiver of bid and award of contract to Atlas Bobcat of Yorkville for the purchase of one two fifteen Bobcat S-six fifty T-four Bobcat Skidsteer, that's a tough word, loader and attachments in amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand.
President Brolli told me to make it tough on you tonight, titles, so I'm just complying with his wish. This is also a budgeted item, this is a replacement of a Skidsteer loader, Bobcat is the brand. I think most everyone's familiar with a Skidsteer, it's a small tractor, one person sits inside, it's quite maneuverable, good for fitting in tight areas, can do a variety of jobs. It's going to replace the current Skidsteer we have that, I don't, I don't know the purchase year of that, it was here, it was submerged in the flood, that much we know. It went through two floods, and I'm pretty sure it's right around nineteen eighty-three. So we feel we got our money's worth out of that. Again, this is in the budget, it was approved as part of the budget process. A little twist on this, when we, when we completed the budget request and put in the request for fifty-five thousand dollars, that was based on the purchase of the Skidsteer and two attachments, a backhoe arm, so it would be a backhoe for getting into tight places, it's a smaller unit, creates less of a excavation, which leads to less restoration, and a sweeper attachment. One of our goals at Public Works over the last few years has been to, to put a more critical eye towards the equipment that we buy to ensure that it's going to be used as intended. So in talking with Alan and some of the other staff, what I would like you, what I would like you to approve tonight is a purchase of a Skidsteer for the forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars, and approval of the balance up to fifty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of attachments. That may turn out to be the backhoe and the sweeper, it may be some other items, and I've included some pictures of some others that we've talked about, stump grinder or grappler attachment. And again, that process, that'll be an internal process where Alan and I and the particular, you know, employees who use this equipment will get together, and just to make sure that we have a plan for using that. We don't want to buy a backhoe attachment that gets bypassed in favor of the traditional backhoe. I mean, we kind of build in a conflict there, the preferred piece is the backhoe, and we're forcing people to use this, or we buy it and it sits. So a little bit different tonight. So again, approval of the purchase of the backhoe, and then approval for purchase of additional attachments that we'll determine in the near future.
Do you have a stump grinder now?
No, no. We do not, we've been contracting that work out.
So the trees, that the staff has been cutting down, you've been contracting out?
Correct. We take them down generally, and then local contractor grinds them out and does the restoration. And some of these, quite honestly, have to do with, with manpower availability. We like the idea of a stump grinder, we're not sure if we can commit to having enough man-hours to do all the stump grinding. So again, if we don't think it's going to be out grinding stumps, we don't want to buy it and just have it sit in the yard, so.
Is the sweeper attachment something you can use for snow removal?
Pardon me, trustee?
The sweeper attachment, is it something that, can it be used for snow removal, or is it just for sidewalk sweeping?
This one not so much, we have a, we have a sweeper attachment now that's a, a big cylindrical broom that works good for moving snow. This is an enclosed sweeper, so this would be for cleaning up parking lots, or, you know, theoretically, you could use it on curb lines. Now, the size of this sweeper would take you an awful long time to do the curb lines, but if we had an event in town that we wanted to clean up a few block area, Montgomery Fest, for instance, or some of the other items, we may use it for cleaning up catch basin inlets, inlets to prevent street flooding, that type of thing. Certainly around our own lot, we have a lot of gravel and debris, et cetera, so that would be the intent for the enclosed sweeper. It captures it, then you can take it and dump it somewhere, the other broom just pushes-
Pushes it off.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need a trailer for this device as well?
Alan? We have a trailer capable of towing it around.
Pete?
You going to put a tooth on the front of that too, so you can break up concrete and blacktop?
We haven't gotten to that point with, with the Skidsteer. You mean the tooth on-
Yeah, with the Skidster.
Tooth on the bucket?
No. Could have put a tooth on it back there, it's like a jackhammer, or it's a big tooth, to go down and bust the concrete up if you taking the concrete off, up or blacktop in the street.
We could look at that, we have a, we have a breaker on the other backhoe.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And most of our concrete and asphalt work like that is done in the street, so probably likely, we'd take the bigger machine up, so get more production. So I don't think we'd be looking at that attachment.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Now I'll take a motion for the fifty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yeet.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee, if I could just add, I would like to acknowledge that you noticed two of these vehicles have come in under budget, and you had brought up the excess equipment sales and such. Alan is really focused on cost control and savings, and he's done a fine job on that, so I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank him. We joked that he should, he'd do better if he asked for five percent of what he saved us, so, but, well done on that. And I'd also like to let you know that Alan has just passed his ASE, Master Technician rating for medium and heavy-duty trucks. So that's quite an accomplishment, you see the ASE symbol in many garages, so that was a series of tests, a lot of at-home studying that Alan did on his own, a lot of nervous moments, so I just wanted to mention that to the board tonight while Alan was here. So well done. Thank you, Alan. Thank you very much.
That's very well done.
Thank you, Alan.
All right. Back to ordinance sixteen twenty-four, regulating wages of the village, waiver first and passage on second reading.
What I want to see is, where's that paper with the wages for staff and, and employees upstairs?
That'll be coming, we're still working on getting results back from all the communities. We've had five of the eight communities have responded, we're still waiting on three.
Why should we care what the other village, we taking care of our own people here.
Maybe I can address what this is about?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that, I mean, we want to keep our good employees, and part of that is knowing what our competitors are paying and being competitive with them. When I first started here, we had police officers going left and right because our wage was very low, and so we check our surrounding communities just to make sure we're in line with them.
Okay, this here doesn't say anything about staff upstairs or-
Nope. Do you like to explain what this is?
Prevailing wages for the village, that can't be true.
Now, this is an ordinance that we pass annually, so every year, this gets passed, and it's required by state law, it's not something that you have an option with.
For this?
For this.
Why does it have in there wages of the village?
It, it's regarding the village, so anything that happens in the village, workers that, that work on Public Works projects, et cetera, have to be paid prevailing wage. In order to pay them that, the contractors need to know how much is prevailing wage. We have to pass the ordinance to say what that is. But these are, this has nothing to do with any single village employee, this only has to do with private entities that do work in the village.
So if we hire an outside contractor to come in and do asphalt work or plumbing work, the village requires that that company is paying these prevailing wages to the guy coming to do the work?
So are you, are they going to bring back prevailing wages for employees in here?
That's, that's not prevailing wages, that's something else entirely, that's just, I think, your wage survey and your determination of what you want to pay people, that, that's a totally separate thing from this.
That was supposed to be brought back to us.
And it will be, as I said, we're still gathering the information, so, but it'll be brought back to you.
All right.
Let you explain it. Steve, thank you.
How about, any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Marisak?
How about, any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Bond?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Lee?
Yes.
Trusty Hines?
Yeet.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Any items for discussion?
Item staff.
Staff? Anybody? Okay, Pete?
When, we hired somebody to cut that lot by the post office. You know where I'm talking about? That guy, that weeds, when he got done, the grass was still that tall. And we better not pay him twice for, he's got to come back and do that again.
Lot adjacent to the post office?
Yeah.
Yes. Have you gone by there and looked at that? That's terrible. It looked, doesn't even look like they did anything. Well, I just want to make sure that he doesn't get paid for that and then come back and get paid to do it again.
Understood.
I think Mike said he used too big a tractor or whatever, so that was right.
Thank you.
Any new or unfinished business?
I have one item, please. It's come to my attention that it may be more cost-effective for the village if we were to, this is related to Public Works and tree funding and tree replacement. Currently, I believe that we are letting the money for the trees and that kind of thing in May when we get our new budget. Does it make sense? And would it be more cost-effective for us to allow you to go to the nurseries or whoever that you want to talk about purchasing trees from in sometime in December or January? Where, because we have this dig window in late spring where if you're getting the money for these trees in May, you've already missed the dig window. Does it make sense to either push that to? You see where I'm going here? Could we get a better deal if we were to, to start the negotiations and looking in December or January?
It pleases the board, I'd like to talk to our arborist, Ed Pfaff. He has a much better understanding of that process. I know he talks to multiple nurseries throughout the year to see what their availability is coming out of winter and where they're, where they stand in the fall and what they're planting and what their expected, you know, product availability will be the following spring. As far as like advance approval to purchase or something, that would certainly help, I believe. But if I could, I'd like to talk to Ed, and we can report back.
Okay. Only reason I know this is because I was at Spring Grove tagging for a project that we're doing, and they mentioned that those, the other trees were from Montgomery and that we might be able to get a better deal prior to really the dig window.
Ed and I can put something together explaining how we currently purchase and try to select those trees and.
Okay.
Get his opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's worth looking into.
Yes, the mayor on the move Saturday, there was people there. Some were very happy, and I think one person bought three trees and was very happy that she could buy half of them, and that way she'd get more. She was very complimentary on, on your suggestion on that, so.
Yeah, she had a great meeting with, Ed had gone out and visited her property, which prompted her to come and ask me if she should give me the money then. And I thought better that she'd get that checked directly to Village Hall. I'm not sure you want to leave that with me. I wanted to thank Trusty Spurling for bringing the donuts and things to Mayor on the Move. It was, it was really well attended. I mean, it really was, a lot of people there.
She could have bought coffee, but she didn't. But that's.
I, you know what? I was, for those of us that drink coffee, apparently it was a bring-your-own. BYOC.
I didn't miss the coffee.
I had ice water, donuts, and coffee cake. If you wanted coffee, hit the Dunkin' Donuts before you.
Because those things go really well together. The iced coffee, the iced water and the donuts, those typically, you get that when you go out.
All right. New, any more new or unfinished business? Go ahead.
I wanted to acknowledge an event that's coming up this Friday, the Montgomery Economic Development Commission, and some of our village staff are going to be picking up litter in the Ockut Industrial Park area to make it look nicer and more presentable. I'm sure they could use some help if anyone would like to join in. But I really am grateful for their public spirit and their willingness to make our economic side look more attractive and more presentable.
Our staff member even jumped right into that. Rich. Very good. And I would like to say tomorrow night, Harvey Sturkle Night, and you have to come in off of Jericho. For some reason, the park district did not open the new section yet, so you can't get